All right, I want to call to order Board of Education Study Session April 16th, 2020, 6 o'clock. Lisa, you take attendance?
All right, so we confirmed from a mic check that all board members are present.
Okay, all right. Before our public comment, I just want to read a statement about public comment. So to submit a public comment during the virtual board meeting at Bloomfield Hills Schools, please visit www.bloomfield.org-comment to complete the online form. In accordance with Executive Order 202048, Bloomfield Hills School Board of Education offers both two-way conference technology and online comment cards as options for the public to address members of the board during virtual meetings. For those who wish to engage in a two-way interaction, please make the selection on the form. You will then be emailed a link and invitation to provide public comment at the beginning and the last item of the agenda before closing public comment. There will be two opportunities for public comment. Comment timestamp between the start of the meeting and the conclusion of the first public comment will be read aloud at the beginning of the agenda of the board and at the end of the meeting by connecting with the public who prefers to address the Board of Education virtually, before reading the comments submitted following the conclusion of the first public comment item. The Board of Education may not answer questions or make statements or commitments. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. Complaints shall be first considered through proper channels before presenting to the Board of Education. The Board should not hear complaints at the open meeting about named district personnel unless the named person requests the Board to hear the complaint at an open session. With that, I'm looking at the first public comment. There is no public comment on the Google Sheet. So I will go to Study Session Agenda Topic A, Continualist Learning Update, and I'll pass it on to Todd Bedlack and his team.
Well, good evening, everybody. And while we have a lot to go over today, we got a lot of great topics. We're here to present on an update of the Continuous Learning Plan 2.0. We are in day four of launching that since Monday. We will be talking about Bowers. We had a great meeting at FFLA today. We think we have a resolution or proposal ready for you for tuition at Bowers. You'll be hearing about an update regarding Prepare You this evening, as well as we think we have a plan that is ready for the full board to consider regarding grading and course credit during our COVID-19 response plan, particularly at the high school level, grades nine through 12. So we'll go ahead and jump into the update for the Continuous Learning Plan. And I think Sarah was... Sarah, you can go ahead and bring up that first slide for us.
Was it up?
We see your entire screen. I don't think it's just on that screen.
I will try that again.
Okay. But I can go ahead and get started. Go ahead and flip right to... Once you're up the... There we go. And you can go ahead and go to where it says Leadership across the screen. So I first just want to start talking about the type of leadership that's been displayed over the last several weeks since the governor gave the executive order for schools to close down. It's been absolutely remarkable and impressive. Our building administration, our teacher leaders, all of our teachers throughout the district, learning services, central office, everybody's been acting very quickly to make sure that we are shoring up and making sure that our families and students are being provided with supports and services at this time. So it's been absolutely impressive as we work through different types of complexities, building out plans, doing research and reviewing what other areas throughout the nation are doing. And it's just been absolutely incredible. And we have some of our building administrations here with us this evening to kind of highlight some of that ongoing work that's been going on. And if we go to the next slide, there was a couple documents that I wanted to really give an update for the board on. And I believe you have seen both of these. And on the Teaching and Learning website now posted, you'll see a link to both of these. One is the Continuous Learning Plan. You'll remember Pat did a great job presenting this at our last board meeting. And the other one on that... Sarah, if you could go back just for a moment. The other document on that you saw last week was the application that under the governor's executive order, we had to submit an application for a Continuous Learning Plan to Oakland schools. That has been approved. So that means our funding for Bloomfield Hills has been secured. So we have both of those documents available. Probably most families, if they wanted to look through one of the plans, is the Continuous Learning Plan, the one in the middle. That's probably the most inviting and written more with an audience of parents and families and teachers in mind. The other one is an application with the audience being Oakland schools. So they both read very differently. But those can be found on our website and anyone can go through that. And Susan, I think, was going to walk us through that first one and start talking a little bit about the structure that we have in place. Susan, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. And hopefully Sarah is able to open up the Continuous Learning Plan. If... In the very back of this plan, there's a really important structure that we really wanted to highlight. You know, Todd's talking about how fast we had to come up with the learning parameters of the Continuous Learning Plan. But we also had to move from a brick and mortar district way of collaborating into a virtual collaboration while also stepping into a new way of instruction. And so we built this Continuous Learning Plan collaborative structure. And if you look from the bottom up, you've heard Superintendent Watson talk about that we really were creating three distinct programs, K5, a 6, 8, a 9, 12, and how important it was going to be for us to stay aligned and consistent. So we created grade level teams. And then each team is led by an administrator who helps coordinate that team as they determine planning and all the different roles that each person takes up in getting the lessons put together. In the middle, those facilitation teams, that's where those leads really keep in communication with each other. They're aligning across their grade levels. And it also gave us a place where we could streamline and make sure that there was equity of resources, all the teacher leader supports, special ed, ancillary staff. And then we have the top, which is the K-12 Steering Committee. And that really is all the leads, the building administrators, continuing teacher leaders, learning services, technology, special ed. And every Monday morning, we check in and we check in as to how things are going. And then we problem solve and anticipate forward. And then you see off to the side as we're moving also into a curation because we are now into a phase where we're up and running. And how do we keep evolving those learning experiences for our students? And how do we best support our teachers? But core to all of this, and we want to emphasize this as much as possible, the teachers, the teacher leaders, the building administrators, how fast we had to reorganize ourselves and step into new collaborations. And it's truly amazing work that they're doing. And I really want to commend them for all the hard work and how fast they had to shift.
So the last page you've seen, those give more description if you're interested in digging a little bit deeper.
And so Sarah, as you jump back into the slideshow, thank you. On the next slide there, just to reiterate what Susan was talking about, you know, it's been absolutely impressive, the way that through the way we've organized the work, how nimble we've been able to become, to be able to move our learning platforms to digitally, virtually, getting them online. So what we're going to do this evening is we're going to walk you through some distinct areas around some of the opportunities and considerations that we have, in particular, in the categories of special education, our instructional models, K8, as well as at the secondary level, 9, 12. So Kimberly's going to get us started next here.
All right, thank you. So those systems in place to build collaboration and leadership across the organization have also had an undergirding process that we shared with you on April 2nd that is taken from the Stanford Design School. Specifically, this highlights the liberatory design practice process. And so while we have been working to innovate and be as responsive as we can and in as quick a manner as we can, I want to assure you that we're also at that place where we're taking a moment to reflect. And so you see in the notice and reflect shapes there that that is actually what we're going to do this evening, is reflect with you a bit of the considerations and opportunities, as Todd indicated, and some of the stories from the field, so to speak, about how that's going. So I think that notion, what I would underscore in that slide, and that's okay if you don't go back, is simply that this is a time for us to share our learning, but also to think about what's going well, as well as what we can do better as we continue to move forward in the interest of learning, but also in the service of equity and inclusion for all of our students. And so we're going to start with highlighting some of the opportunities that really have been universal. So these two slides here will take a broad sort of summation of what we've noticed as opportunities and considerations across our K-12 learning landscape. And then, as Todd has mentioned, our building administrators are here also to dig into some of the details behind some of those stories and what brings us to understand those nuances as either opportunities or considerations for further momentum. We spoke a little bit already about this idea of leveraging our wonderful staff and building administrative teams, as well as our central office teams, to quickly pivot to remote learning. We know that we take a very student-centered approach when we're in-house and looking to realize those same opportunities in the at-home structure has been foundational to our conversations with our teacher teams as well as focusing on student wellness and the challenges that a remote learning environment might provide. Our... Pardon me. Our staff has really stepped up to innovate in these areas and considering ways to connect with our children. We miss them dearly. And so that just comes forward really naturally in a lot of the video and the connections that you see. As you know, our district-wide collaboration by grade level across the content in the course is underway all week long. And then, as we consider new tools that are made available to us that allow us to consider remote learning that will do more than keep folks busy, but rather enhance understandings in ways that are hallmarks of a Bloomfield education. Those continue to be our goals, as well as to continue to support teachers and families who may be either overwhelmed in their home situations or may have challenges with illness in this difficult time and looking to provide continuity, both in human care as well as in curriculum progression. So some of the things that we've been considering our way through are connecting with all of our families and all of our students. We know that access continues to be tricky and someone may be very well-connected at one moment and then we can't hear their audio, right? Much like this meeting at another moment. And so that's something that continues to be on deck for us. The collaboration in an online format, while we know our community members, as well as our teachers and their families, are navigating unique conditions at home. The scheduling of class connections is important to us to maximize the way our teachers are able to make contact with students, as well as the student-to-student connection stays strong. We know that we want to focus on meaningful ways to do that in ways that don't become cumbersome or become forced choices for people to have schedules that have overlap. And then we've also been spending an incredible amount of time that you'll hear more about this evening in relation to grading and credit. And so those sort of the broad brush of how we've been thinking through opportunities and considerations, we're going to highlight what that has looked like with our special educators, as well as with K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12, as we move forward. So I'm going to turn this over at this moment to think about some of the things that are specific to special education.
So that's my cue. So this is Jennifer Perone. I'm going to introduce Trevor and Rebecca, who are going to go over some successes and considerations in special education. Before I do that, I just want to say that I would love to applaud our staff for the amount of effort and time and energy that they're putting into really making some very, very meaningful connections with their students. The collaboration that's been happening between special education and general education is really better than I could even have hoped for. Staff are really going out of their way to make sure that students are cared for and that parents are made to feel as though we're here to support them in all conditions. Some of the things that have happened over the last week, we held an online PAC Live on Facebook and we had a number of parent participants. It's also posted on our website. We did a live Q and A and that was very well received. We've also, just in lieu of what's happening, extended our Celebrate Hope opportunities for parents as parent support groups. And so now we're offering those weeklies for families. And again, that's been very well received and appreciated. We're really trying to focus on compassion over compliance, but our staff are doing a really great job in both. So with that, I will turn it over to Trevor, who is going to start by talking through some of the successes that we've had.
Good evening, everyone. This is Trevor Harker. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to start us off by sharing our celebrations tonight. The first bullet point on the slide says staff collaboration amongst all staff, teachers, ancillary interpreters, interveners, peer professionals, instructional assistants, consultants, and more. That list continues to go on and on. District-wide COVID-19 has brought opportunities for alignment as we continue to service all of our students. We are in a time of uncertainty and change and faced with daily unknowns. You may not realize it now and it doesn't seem like it's reality, but there will be a silver lining. And that's something that we are all learning through this and something that our staff is working through on a daily basis. They're all starting to collaborate. I can definitely say with certainty that everyone involved has a new respect for the importance of collaboration, which you've heard multiple people say today. Some examples, we have our social workers, psychologists, counselors, district-wide, are all working together to plan SEL lessons and are providing support to our teachers, students, and families, some who may not have had the opportunity to collaborate before this. Another example is our special education staff are collaborating with general education grade level teams at a level that some may have shied away from in the past. It's becoming even more apparent that all of us have one common goal and that's student success during these unprecedented times. The second bullet point we have here is district-level understanding of importance and challenges of providing accessibility for DHH. Questions and problem solving regarding accessibility is something that we deal with on a daily basis, even within the brick and mortar schools. I'm first going to give kudos specifically to our building administrators. Along with the administrators who have DHH programs integrated into their buildings, I've seen multiple administrators who don't normally have DHH students in their buildings step up to advocate for our unique learners, who we, as we know, are extremely complex. Their advocacy and willingness to participate in discussions and modify practices have allowed our teams to provide guidance and an ever-improving process for ensuring our students have equal access to instruction. Currently, and I'm going to spotlight the DHH program just for a second. And currently, the DHH program is offering a continuum of supports for our learners, including interpreters in pre-scheduled general education classroom meetings, interpreter embedded videos, which is more than captioning, and a live hotline from 8:00 to 4:00 every day to provide site translation for any family member, any parent or student who may be struggling with some of the work or their directions. And then, starting next week, we're going to be moving forward with having our intervener support provide different opportunities for not only teaching the student, but opportunities for the parents to learn some strategies to work with their students as well. Our goal is to reflect, modify, and improve week by week. The third bullet point here, we have positive feedback from parents. I've received multiple emails. I know Jen, as well as Rebecca have as well. Some of those emails, the details regarding the positive feedback have been that parents and students are loving video representations that they are receiving. Wing Lake has an average of 15 students who have attended speech group sessions each week. The DHH parents are impressed with the general education videos embedded with interpreter support. We have numerous families utilizing the interpreter hotline for site translation, and we also have staff utilizing it as well. Parents are realizing that the amount of time and energy that staff are putting into developing templates, creating lessons for the virtual platform, and the amount of collaboration between professionals to ensure student success is just ginormous. The truth is that parents are now on the front lines. They are taking a dynamic role as educators at this point, and they're wearing multiple hats. They're the teacher, the parent pro, the ancillary staff member, and sometimes even the intervener. So our staff is readily available to support them in that. Parents are appreciating and are benefiting from sitting in on instruction with their children and that they are learning strategies to transfer to the home setting. And the last bullet point on here that we have is good faith efforts are being made to meet the needs of the students with 504s and IEPs. IEP meetings are continuing to be held. Staff are delivering services and providing support to students in both Bloomfield and the non-public schools in the most practical and reasonable way to the best of their abilities. Staff are collaborating with teachers and parents to meet the individual needs of our students, whether that be through a virtual group session, pre-recorded session, office hours, and some one-on-one instruction. Thank you. And I'm going to pass this on to Rebecca Anders.
Hi, everyone. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I get to speak about the considerations in special education. These are all items that we'll continue to reflect upon and learn and things that will guide us. For example, the first one is we continue to be in a world of unknowns. We are waiting for more guidance from MDE, the Office of Special Ed, U.S. Department of Ed, and Office of Civil Rights regarding many things, such as flexibility with FAP, Free and Appropriate Education. However, as we receive guidance and we're working almost daily with our peers all throughout Oakland County, we have been very strategic in how we're communicating information to our staff, being very conscious of the hardships they may be facing at home and the emotional impact that the change, any changes that we put out there may cause. Additionally, we are working so hard to make sure that messaging is consistent and the same across the department. So we have a Q and A on our Google Classroom. We're asking all staff to post questions there and then we're responding to their questions within the day to make sure that everybody can see what the responses are. We're also working on a manual for related directly to COVID-19 and providing services that will be going out to our staff. We are continuously reflecting upon the accessibility accommodations and modifications that need to be made for learning. So just as with everyone that's experiencing this pandemic, instruction and learning through virtual platforms is not the same as the brick and mortar building. And for students with special needs, it makes it even more challenging to do things virtually. So our staff, I could not be more proud of how hard they are working. They are continuing to modify practices to meet the needs of all learners while considering the barriers and implications of virtual learning. For example, we have related service providers such as occupational therapy and physical therapy. Those can be very difficult for staff to teach or to replicate via video conferencing. But we are working really hard to put forth our best efforts to do that. Just this evening, I received an email from the occupational therapist at Wing Lake. They had 18 students in their groups today. And one of the challenges is that sometimes parents don't always have all of the materials that they need at home in order to do the things that the therapists are asking. However, we are working really hard with parents to get those materials. But also, one of the blessings is that therapists are be able to give hands-on education to the families that, like Trevor said, will transfer beyond this. Like, I can't wait to hear a year from now at an IEP how much parents have learned about how to help their students at home because of this experience. We have another ongoing reflection is that, you know, we have students who are deaf and hard of hearing that are starved for conversation. Many of them are currently isolated as their families don't know ASL. So this week, by all of the video conferencing and recordings and live sessions that have been occurring, you know, we're hopeful that that has brought some warmth to our students. And let's see. We are all balancing work and school and our own children and their needs, and our parents are as well. And so we're recognizing that. So we have staff who are already changing schedules of their office hours and things like that to assist families and making sure that they are able to meet their own work needs, as well as working with their children. We're going to continue working through these barriers and reflecting upon all of the work that we are doing. One of the things that we know is at the end of COVID-19 and in this pandemic, once we are back at school, we may have to look at doing some makeup service for students. We are waiting on further guidance from MDE and the U.S. Department of Ed, but we are not waiting forever for that guidance, right? So we know that that guidance is going to tell us how to go about the makeup services. But Trevor, Jen, and I have already been thinking about what they could look like for this summer and potentially if they have to expand into summer of 2021. Another component is summer programming, so ESY and SCAMP. We are planning as if we're able to get back into the buildings for both ESY and SCAMP. However, if in the event that we are not, SCAMP will not run, but ESY would continue in a virtual format. And then the last thing is that we have a potential impact on the Wing Lake calendar as the start date for the 2021 school year at Wing Lake is July 14th. So we know that we have to await further guidance from our governor and the executive order regarding when we can get back into buildings. And we will plan to definitely adhere to strict guidance and reentry plans. So at Wing Lake, I met with the crisis team today. And thankfully, just to let you know, all of our students who are so medically complex are healthy. And so that was so heartwarming for all of us to hear that from our school nurse today. And they have been healthy. We don't know of any cases. And so that is so heartwarming for us. But we do have concerns and we know that our students are significantly impacted. Their immune systems are very much just... They lack good immune systems. And so we want to ensure that when we do go back to school that we're not setting students up to be in an environment where COVID-19 could research. And so, and the last thing about Wing Lake specifically is, you know, we are a building that holds a graduation every year. So I met with our staff yesterday and we decided that for prom, we're going to forego that. Our students have multiple years of opportunities to attend prom, but we would like to hold graduation. We have 11 students exiting public education at the end of June. And so we would like to bring them back in the fall for an in-person ceremony just because it really is, one, it would be hard with our population to do that virtually. And two, it really is a time for celebration and closure for our families and our students. So I am now going to pass this on to Kimberly and just wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity this evening.
Hey, Rebecca, sorry, before you go, it's Jennifer. I'm not familiar with the ESY and SCAMP acronyms. Can you elaborate, please?
Yes, I can. So Extended School Year is provided as a part of FAP. And so students have to be eligible and meet certain criteria to have to receive Extended School Year. So this is different from makeup services because of COVID-19. There are three criteria. So it's regression and recruitment. It is... Oh, gosh, Jen, I'm forgetting the second one. But the nature and severity of illness or of disability, and then critical stage. And so we always look at data on whether or not students meet eligibility for Extended School Year and whether or not they need services to maintain, not make, but maintain progress on their goals and objectives. SCAMP is a program that Bloomfield has run for, I think, 50-ish, a long time, many, many years. And that is a program, a camp for students with special needs that come from all over the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Rebecca. I think that the work that your team and Trevor's team have done to work alongside each of the grade level teams, as well as the building administrators, have really lifted the level of our professional collaboration, not only to meet the needs of unique learners that you've named, but also for... but also for our students in general education classroom. I think it's really, we've been really pleased with the level of collaboration that our staff have engaged in with one another to meet the needs of all kids across the day. Some of the nuances and complexities that you shared really highlight what might seem like a simple fix from, from a single family at home in their living room. For, for a few children, what becomes much more complexed or nuanced when we're thinking about consistency across a range of learners. So thank you for unpacking a little bit of that for us this evening. We are going to shift gears to walk through those same considerations and opportunities with kindergarten through fifth grade. And Mary Hillberry and Harleen Singh and I all kind of tag-team some of these wonderful stories from the front, as well as some of the challenging things that we're considering as we continue to strive to make the remote learning as positive of an experience as it can be for every adult, child, and family member in our organization.
Thank you, Kimberly, and thank you to the board members for including us tonight. I think that Harleen and Jessica and I all have some really positive experiences to share and also to share that we're still all learning. Every, every day brings a new challenge and a new quandary. And I, I can't say enough about how our staff has stepped up to meet this incredible challenge over the last few weeks. I would say, first and foremost, I think that we need to give a huge shout out to our tech department from David on down. We have had a tremendous amount of support. Also, I just think that they had us in a very well situated to take on this challenge with the amount of tech support that our teachers have had for years and the amount of devices and the familiarity that teachers had with the technology that has been incredibly useful to them in, in this remote learning situation. I would also want to give a particular shout out to our building media specialists who have been providing just tremendous support to our teachers, from phone calls to FaceTime calls to walking them through to staff meetings where they're presenting technology tools that are new to the teachers. Again, I just think we were very well situated with having building media specialists there at the ready with the skills we needed and the relationships with staff to support them in a way that was really needed to get this remote learning off the ground as quickly as we were able to. So I think if I were to sum up the tales from the front, as Kimberly said, I would say for sure innovation, alignment, and collaboration are the big three. And I would tie that up with a ribbon of saying that really our staff is focused first and foremost on supporting families and kids and making this learning as accessible to them as possible. You know, I'm hearing stories, everything from teachers dropping off bags of books on porches for kids to teachers literally showing up on porches to teach through the storm door so parents can see what a lesson looks like in real life. We have teachers using their iPhones on stacks of soup cans to facilitate what would be a document camera. We have teachers spending forty minutes to an hour one-on-one with families, helping them get their computers set up and making sure that they understood how to log in and so forth. There's just really been a tremendous effort and a tremendous level of concern to support families in making this experience as positive for their children as possible. And I really think the teachers have put their hearts into it. I met with my kindergarten representative group this morning, and I just sat back for a while and listened to them chat as they were sharing stories from this week. And you could just see their faces just lighting up with the energy and enthusiasm and sharing the fun that they were having in their daily Google meetups with kids. And it was, it was just really, it was really a good moment for me emotionally just to know that that joy in teaching seems to have reinfected everything because it's definitely been a real stressful period for teachers. And to see the fruition of a lot of their efforts and time and energy was, was very, a very positive moment for me. Growth in tech skills is obviously a big learning curve, not only for our teachers, but also for our families. And, and we're shifting gears fairly regularly as we're finding new things or things are working today that weren't working tomorrow. Like, you know, this week we had issues with Google Meet and the grid view. And, you know, that, that can really throw things into a tizzy for a lower L family where you have, you know, a parent who has just figured out how to do something, and then that something isn't working the next day, or we find something better. So we're trying to do a lot of handholding and a lot of support for our families as we go. The slides, and Sarah, I don't know if you want to proceed through these. We're obviously not going to read all of these to you, but we did want to share some of the impressions, some of the feedback specifically, not only from our families, but also from our students and a few of our staff members. There's pictures in here of some of the workspaces of the teachers, of some of the students. Here's one of our third graders communicating with this teacher. And we just wanted to make sure that you were hearing these, these stories from families who just really appreciate the team effort that has gone into making remote learning such a positive experience for their families. So with that, I'm going to hand off to Harleen so she can share a little bit more of the middle school perspective.
Thank, Kimberly, did I saw you, did you want to say something first?
Yeah, I was thinking as, as Mary was talking and I was watching the young man with the iPad there and reading some of the commentary that I would, I would add that our staff are innovating and also really looking to hold on to recreate some of the experiences that have been known, right? Much, much like Rebecca spoke about how we might think about a graduation in the future or what are the things and what are the traditions that our students are accustomed to? And how can we re-engineer some of those things so that they can work in this new environment? And a group of, of us as building leaders and central office administrators, we're in a, in a quick meeting earlier this week. And if I could just give you the snapshot of how this went, our fourth graders take a field trip to the nature center each spring and May, and they time that trip to collect data about the migration of birds. And it's been a multi-year project. And this year, fourth graders aren't going to be in person at the nature center. And they immediately quickly said, can we figure out how to remote this? And Noel Collis, our K-12 science leader, and myself and Andy Geniak had a quick, quick connection. There was a science meeting happening with our fourth grade leads that afternoon. We hopped in virtually. Plans are underway for our fourth graders to experience some live cam with the bird banding. We're going to be putting some ed puzzles together so that our families and kids can do some observations of those kinds of things live and outside. And so they won't miss the trip. You know, we won't be elbow to elbow as, as a fourth grade team at the nature center this spring, but we're still going to be in the birds, and we're still going to collect the data, and we're still going to connect that to our science curriculum. And so I think that it's innovating and it's also trying to consider tradition. And, and boy, were our staff thrilled that this group's, group of kids wasn't going to miss that experience. So I think it's, it's, it's heartwarming to watch people really have passion for their craft and step up and do all that they can for the kids that we serve. So Harleen, I'm sorry to cut you off. I just didn't want to lose track of my bird banding story because like Mary had said, when she listened to that kindergarten team this morning, we're all having these moments that, that really lift us up in, in what is a really challenging experience right now in terms of learning and leading. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Kimberly. Good evening. I just want to echo a lot of what has been shared. But before I do, I know Mary gave a special shout out to the tech department, and I echo that they have been tremendous, super responsive. Just got out of the meeting this afternoon with my fifth grade representatives, and they could not say enough about Dave and Lauren and Sam. I mean, everyone has just been super responsive. But I also want to take a second to give a shout out to LST. I mean, they have been working nonstop and really just paving the way for us, working with us hand-in-hand. I know they've been working tremendous hours. And so thank you to them because I think we are where we are in a really good place at Bloomfield because of their, their leadership. So special thank you to, to LST. But just really wanted to thank you for the opportunity to allow Mary and Jessica and myself to be here along with special ed. There's tremendous things happening in this district. And I think when we started this journey, there was a lot of unknown, and there still is a lot of unknown. But to me personally, and I know to a lot of administrators and to the parents, the one thing that has become abundantly clear is the incredible work ethic of our, of our teachers and their willingness to do whatever it takes to support their families and students. They are working nonstop, collaborating, just really being there for one another, offering grace and patience as we all learn this together. The alignment that I see is like none other. I mean, I've been in this district for several years, and I think it's, it's kind of funny to think it took a pandemic to get us where we are. These teachers are working incredibly long hours to making sure that their students and their parents and the families are getting what they need. So just echo what everyone is saying, so proud of what I see. I have the privilege of working with fifth grade on a weekly, daily basis. And then, of course, as a building administrator, check in with other grade levels. But it's just, it's incredible to see the things that they're coming up with, just innovative. I mean, Mary was telling the story about stacking up soup cans so you can have a dot cam. And there was another teacher talking about waiting for, you know, things have been backordered. So what are they, what are they doing to create a makeshift whiteboard? And, you know, it's just, it's really cool to see what the teachers are doing to make sure that the, the needs of their students are being met. You see staff emerging as leaders. Just the other day, I had one of our veteran teachers really struggling with, how do I communicate with families? Like, I really want to start this Q communication. And we had another teacher step up and kind of guide them through how you, how you send out a Q communication and how you can send as a text because sometimes families aren't checking emails. And so they're really just kind of coming out of their comfort zone and trying new things. This teacher was joking around, and she's like, I'm old. I don't know how to use technology. And, you know, other teachers like, that's okay. I'll show you how to do it. And it's just great to see that collaboration. And then above, you know, seeing teachers kind of rise as leaders, you see students also emerging as leaders. Just today, we had a fifth grade teacher sharing that one of their students wasn't sure how to submit an assignment on Pearson. And so one of the students was like, hey, can I share my screen? And they jumped on, they shared their screen, and they were walking students through how to submit assignments. And so I think, you know, this, where we are right now presents a lot of challenges, but it's been so great to see how we're all bounding together and kind of working and supporting each other through this. You know, Kimberly talked about the notion of noticing and reflecting. And I see that firsthand. You know, I think teachers really have that user-first mentality. I think they are doing whatever they need to do to make sure that the needs of students and families are being met. So each, you know, it's hard to believe that this is only the fourth day of this new program. I mean, it is Thursday. We've only been doing this for a couple days yet. I think teachers are tweaking things as we go. This afternoon, when we had our meeting in fifth grade, we're talking about, how do we change the template to make it more user-friendly? You know, let's color code the day so when I'm having my office team with my fifth graders, I can say, okay, scroll down to the purple section. Yep, purple is Thursday. So let's talk about the reading and writing activity, thinking about, you know, taking out some of the extra information that students might not need. And so they are, they're, they're continuously trying to get feedback from families and then implement that feedback. And that, I mean, that's what we're, that's kind of what we're here to do is really support our families, making sure that we know that they're the users. So how do we support them, take their feedback, and make sure that we're implementing that? So as we move forward, you know, as Mary mentioned, we have several slides here with some feedback that we received from families, from staff. My favorite is always getting the student voice. We have some quotes from students. And it's, you know, of, of course, they are the ones that we are, we're working to just appease. Like, they are the ones who are the end users. And, you know, I think students are feeling very confident. They're feeling comfortable with the new process. They, they love the office hours. They know that those are the times that they can check in with their, with their teachers, with their classmates. And, you know, they love the fact that they have a little bit of, they can pace themselves. They also have some great suggestions. We had a teacher who did kind of like a Google form to get some feedback from the students. And so they came up with a lot of things for us to consider. And I think those are, those are the kind of considerations that we want to move forward with. I think, you know, the fact that there are so many office hours, and they love that, but then trying to balance like which ones they can attend and which ones they cannot. And so I think that's something, some conversations that we're having. So just going forward, I think, you know, keeping in mind of how to keep things accessible, make sure that we are supporting our students and making sure it's also not overwhelming. But I, you know, I can't say enough of how proud I am of what we've put together, the teachers just banding together and really supporting each other. So excited that this is only day four, and we've already made a ton of progress. And, you know, we have a lot of considerations that we know that we're going to kind of work towards. But just all in all, really proud of what we've, what we've accomplished thus far. So with that, I think I'm going to pass it over to Sarah to talk about nine twelve.
Sorry about that. I have to toggle a little too many things all at once. Can you hear me?
Yes, Sarah.
Thank you. So moving into the high school, we have opportunities and considerations for high school as well. One of the added bonuses is that the high school students are very familiar with being online in terms of using campus or Google Classroom as that is the main way that teachers communicate outside of school with the students. So that part of the process was a little bit easier, I think, than maybe K-8 had in terms of having the students be able to navigate the system. The harder part was how do you go from a ninety-minute class in which there are three to four activities every hour with that engage students in both independent work, direct instruction work, and also collaborative work with students through the NYPD system and DP as well, but mostly with the million years program. Group work and collaboration is a huge part of the learning experience where the students not only learn how to navigate the social interaction, but they also learn from and with each other. Moving to an online situation where you interact with a screen and not with a colleague is very difficult for students. So that's one of our bigger challenges as we move forward and also an opportunity for us to figure out different ways to have that collaborative culture remain. So as the slide says, we really work on relationships before rigor. We worked on grace before grades, patience before programs, and love before lessons. And I'm going to pass this over to Jessica, and she's going to walk you through the opportunities that the COVID has allowed us to work with at the high school level and then also some considerations we have moving forward based upon rules and regulations that are coming from the governor and from the Michigan Department of Ed. So Jessica, are you there?
I am here, Sarah. Thank you. I, I, first of all, much like Harleen and Mary said, I want to thank you for having us here and letting us share some of our successes and, and some of our considerations with you all today. This has been a very crazy situation, very, very difficult situation for all of us to deal with. And, and I think we are really making our way through positively. And I'm really proud of what our staff has been able to, to navigate and how they've really been able to transfer from that brick and mortar school situation to now a more of an online learning. And so one thing that we have really tried to put to the forefront is being able to support our students and families with a one-stop shop, so to speak, for anything that deals with the continuous learning and school closures and anything that we do. So we have reorganized our website so that we have a button that they can click that'll take them directly to the nine twelve piece of the continuous learning plan where students can access directly there all of the templates for each of their courses. On this website, we have all the communications that go out to parents, all the communications that go out to students. So if something was sent via email and a student can't find it in their email or, or don't know where to look for it, you can go to the website and everything is right there. We also got an email yesterday from one of our teachers, one of our tenth grade teachers. And she made a personal organizer for the students that would allow them to organize all of the learning engagements that they have, the office hours and things like that, so they were able to kind of see it all just on one page for. organize all of the learning engagements that they have, the office hours and things like that. So they were able to kind of see it all just on one page for all of their classes. So we've included that on the website as well. She had made it for the, one of the 10th grade learning communities and, and shared it with us. And we were able to to put it out there for any of our students nine twelve to access that. Sarah, you can go to the next slide if you want. The other thing, we've really been able to leverage our staff to really help guide each other through this transition to remote learning, much like Harleen and Mary were saying, and there is a bit of a learning curve with the technology. Not all of our teachers are, are familiar with Google meets and, and things of that nature. So Rachel Matts and Stephanie Bevieu have been really pivotal in in creating online tutorials. All sorts of compiling, all sorts of resources. We are, much like the website, the reorganization of the website for students and families. We're also making a website for our staff where they would log in and they would, all of their resources would be in one place for them, for the high school. So our teacher leaders, our content area leaders are all working so hard to help our staff all get aligned and be cohesive. And the amount of collaboration that we've seen in the past, you know, three weeks has just been amazing in terms of, of getting ourselves organized and being able to get this out there to students and families. Sarah, can you go to the student voice slide, please? So we, I'm sorry, the, the student centered slide, I'm sorry. Thank you. So we've really been trying to organize everything to be student centered and really to support and make connections. Our counseling department is doing an amazing job. They are doing regular social emotional learning check-ins. They have set up Google classrooms for each grade. They're making regular communications with their students. They are continuing with Senior Honors Night and College 101 for juniors virtually. So they're working on the plans to do those things. I'm working with Charlie and we, and, and David and Kathy, and we're working with PTO and we're, we're working with student leadership. And to really make sure that we can somehow have the events that our seniors are missing, or end of the year events that our seniors are missing, that we can somehow do those things. We have all sorts of ideas that, that we're working through for, to, to talk about, you know, think about prom and, and graduation and NHS and NHS induction ceremony and all of these things we're working every day to, to come up with, with ways to do that. Our senior student leadership students are making a senior montage of photographs and videos of all four years of high school that they're going to send out to all families. Our be nice group from student leadership is organizing that will start next week. Social media kindness and positivity challenges to help build morale while students are at home and to keep students connected. We've had we've had many of our teachers have been really excited about the, doing the Google meets and and, and learning all of those things and, and having their, their students join them. And many of you saw Matt McLeod's tweet about his DP religion students joining him for office hours. So you know, we're, we're all navigating this and I, and our staff is doing just a tremendous job and really putting students at the center of, of what they're doing. And if, if you look at some of the quotes that I received from students and some of the pictures here, and you can see the smiles on their faces, I met with two different groups of students this afternoon. I, I met with the DP juniors and seniors this afternoon because they're coming up on, on having to turn in all of their assessments to the IB organization. And when I meet with them, I meet with them regularly, the, the, the joy on their face, just to be able to see each other and, and and just have these conversations is just, is just unbelievable. And I also met with the be nice group from student leadership to roll out this plan and, and talking about, you know, how do we, how do we help our, our incoming freshmen at the beginning of next year? And what are some things that we can do to kind of help with their transition? And you know, as you can see, there's a picture of Phil right there, conducting some office hours in front of his map. So you know, everybody's, everybody, I think is just doing a tremendous job. Really navigating through all of this. And on, on our next slide, Sarah, we just, I just took some quotes from some feedback that we got from a parent the other day. You know, just thanking us for for really making a plan that is flexible and and, you know, that, that allows students to, to do the things that they need to do, but still to consider or to still be able to progress through the curriculum. So Sarah, do we want to move into our considerations? So our biggest consideration that, that we're, we're looking at right now and that we've been working really, really hard on is our guidelines for for credit and grading practices. And we Sarah, do, do you want to introduce this and then I'll explain it?
Sorry, trying to get my mic to come on. So here I am. So going into the continuous learning program, one of the things that we keep hearing from parents and teachers and everyone else is how are we going to give credit at the high school level? And it's not an easy answer. Because no one really knows what's going to happen next. So the, the idea of grades and credit means something different to every different entities. So to students, they mean to, one thing to parents, they mean something else. And then colleges or post-secondary plans also are looking at different ways. So we're navigating these strange waters out there without really understanding exactly how and when and what grades will be used for what. So when we decided to put together a plan, we wanted to look really at, for high school students, what was their idea of their post-secondary mission or what they wanted to be? And that is embedded in their educational development plan. So their educational development plan indicates that they want to go to college, but with some, or go to a community college or do some sort of post high school graduation work in school, we need to make sure that we provide a course of study that allows them to pursue that dream or that education development plan. If we have students who have a different plan, but they don't want to go to a school, go to a college or do something else, we want to make sure we also give them the opportunity to pursue that. So that is always our mission at the high school. So how do you continue that in COVID? Is, is where we are focused. So looking at high school credit options, we have six goals. The first one is to provide a course of study and course credit in our grades that provides students the opportunity to beat their EDP. I'm sorry, the speed I'm on is not showing. Let me try that again. So you were just looking at the other one. I apologize. Lots of new toys. There we go. Okay. So you should see, I'm looking at my screen to make sure it comes up. There it is. So what we are looking at here is that we wanted to have the five or the six goals of provide a course of study and course credit for the students that allows them to beat their goals of the, of their educational development plan. Provide students with options and agency on credits and grades during this pandemic. Flexibility is for teachers and students to achieve credit based on extending many circumstances. Support all students with continued exposure to content and skills needed in post-secondary pursuits. Support students that may have issues assessing or engaging in remote learning. And lastly, make every effort to make every effort, including issuing an I in complete grade to ensure that every student passes or receives credit in every course, especially during this pandemic. One of the problems that we run into for our students is it does depend upon what their post-secondary goals are in terms of implications for grades versus credit. So currently the NC double, NCAA is saying that if a student gets a credit for a course, then they put that into a GPA as a D. That would put a student who might be at a B right now, and of course, who if we made the decision to make everything go credit, no credit, that would actually lower their GPA within the NCAA guidelines. That is also true in some places for scholarships. For colleges, specifically the competitive scholarships, or even for some private scholarships. So when we talk about agency for students, we want to make sure that we provide them a space that allows them to make the decision that's best for them based upon credits or grades, which one works for them. When we also looked at it, we decided that we, that students might have different abilities to assess different content. So let's say you're in ceramics right now. It's really difficult to do ceramics from home if you don't have your materials versus maybe doing math. So would a student make a different decision in terms of the ceramics grade that they wanted to have versus the math grade that they wanted to have? So we wanted to make sure we have flexibility in there for students and families based upon where they were going after, after high school. So we have come up with, I'm going to show you just this quick chart. Right here is all of the background information of the research that we did through both the executive order, the Michigan Department of Education and MASSP and MAISA in terms of giving guidance to schools. We also looked at other local schools, but they're doing around us. So we have five districts that we know of that are giving both letter grades and credit or no credit. That's Avondale here in Valley, Lake Orion, Oxford and West Bloomfield. We know that there are districts who are only giving credit or no credit and no grades, and that is Birmingham, Rochester and Troy. And then there are also private parochial schools in our areas that are giving only grades, and that includes Cranbrook, Kingswood and U of D Jesuit. So we wanted to stay with our components of unconnectedness and content and compassion and reflection and improvement during this time. So at both Bowers and at Bloomfield Hills High School, seniors have three options for grades versus credit. The first, so it's important to know is that they need to have engaged and earned credit in sixty percent of the learning engagements that we have provided since Monday, since April thirteenth. So if that means that there was a math assignment, you've done the math assignment, you submit to the teacher, the teacher gives you credit or no credit. If the work is not sufficient, is, if it's not up to the level of a high school math student, then the teacher will give formative feedback and allow the student to improve that work. So that gets to the level of credit. We want to make sure that students are continuing to learn the content and skills that they needed for those post-secondary pursuits, which is why we are continuing our teaching. It's also what we do as educators. And we want to prepare our students. So that is why we're putting on that credit onto those assignments. If those students have done, these are seniors, sixty percent earn credit on sixty percent of that. So if that means there's five engagements a week that they have done three and a half to four of those, four of those. Then we should be in good shape, actually three of those, they, three out of the five every two weeks, they will be in good standing in that class. On June first, they can take one of three options. The first one is a COVID credit or no credit. This will not impact their GPA. They'll just receive either credit or no credit on the transcript. If they have enough graduation requirements, this will allow them to graduate. They could do a grade improvement if on March eleventh, they did not like their grade in the class, they can do eighty percent of those credit-based learning engagements that we do online. And then also do a final activity in the class that demonstrates their learning and then using the formula in this box right here, where forty percent of the grade is what they had between, before March eleventh. Forty percent of the grade is what they have earned since April thirteenth, which actually if they meet the eighty percent grade will be an A or a hundred percent. And then twenty percent will be their final activity. That will become their final course grade that will be included in their GPA and also will allow them to graduate on time. One third option that's only available to seniors based upon the executive order by the governor is that if they wanted to keep the grade that they had on March twelfth, as long as they've engaged in eighty percent of the credit or earn eighty percent of the credit for those learning engagements, then they can, on June first, say, I just want my March twelfth grade and that, that is the grade they get and they are done. The difference between the grade improvement and the March twelfth grade is that those students do not need to do that final activity, that final twenty percent. And they can just go and take the grade that they had in the books on March twelfth. Lastly, there is a no credit. This is not something that we would recommend. In fact, we'll work really hard with students to not go for the no credit area. Some students, I have examples later on, might do that based upon a class and they've already earned enough high school credit and that is an option they have. However, it is our goal as a administrative team, as a teacher team and as a counseling team, to make sure that there is no student who falls behind specifically a senior. And that we will do everything we can in our power to make sure that they graduate on time and receive the credit that they need. The graphic below, just, just another way of looking at the three options. You have your credit, no credit. You have your grade improvement option and you have your March twelfth grade option. And then we also have, just to understand it a different way, is if you wanted to see what your option was, if you took the, the credit and your grade was an A or an E or an I, A to E or I, what you would have to do in the end and what the implications for your GPA and graduation are. So that is where we are for this portion. And then we also have this down here. Samples of senior decisions. And I think this is probably where I'm going to turn this over to Jessica. So she can talk about how the different students might make different decisions as they go through, specifically seniors, as they go through the credit, no credit or the March twelfth option.
Okay. I just want to pull it up on my screen really quickly so I can read it because I can't read it on yours, Sarah, sorry. So, so some samples of, of what, what a senior might do, say, say you have a senior in engineering student that's headed to the University of Michigan and they have a current GPA of three point eight nine. So maybe the, the course that they're looking at is their AP calculus course. And they're, they're going to decide to take the March twelfth grade option. So say they had an A minus at March twelfth. And they, they are going to choose that March twelfth grade option because, for, for a few reasons. One, they're probably going to be taking the AP test. And so they're going to complete the eighty percent of those learning engagements or at least eighty percent of the learning engagement. So that they, that, that they keep up and are able to, to pass that AP test. And they, they wouldn't need to do that culminating activity because they've already taken the AP test. That would be their culminating activity, so to speak. And their final grade would remain an A minus. That grade would be factored into their GPA and their placement in college is going to be based on math placement and/or their AP score. They would meet a graduation requirement and they would be fine. You may have that same engineering student, the same student, or who's headed into engineering, the same student as, as I just previously mentioned. And maybe they're, the, one of the courses that they're in is team sports. And maybe in March, they had a C in their team sports class. They may choose to take the credit, no credit option. They would complete sixty percent of their learning engagements. They would receive credit. It would not be factored into their GPA. They would meet the graduation requirements and, and then graduate. You, you may have a student who's going maybe to work for their family company. Maybe they, they don't have plans to go to college based on their EDP. Their current GPA is a three point O. They're in modern lit, maybe their March grade is a C minus. They may choose to do the credit, no credit option. They would complete the sixty percent of their learning engagements. They would receive credit. That wouldn't be factored into their GPA. So their GPA wouldn't go down from a three point O, it would stay as a three point O. They would satisfy the graduation requirement for that modern literature course. They would still graduate and, and move on. You may have a student who might be working towards a scholarship for college and really needs to improve their GPA in order to qualify for that scholarship. Maybe they're in an anatomy course and March, they have a B plus, but in order to qualify, they need an A. So they're going to choose the great improvement opportunity. So forty percent of their score would be based on that B plus. They would complete eighty percent of the learning engagements, at least eighty percent of the learning engagements. They would receive an A for that second forty. They would receive an A for that second 40%. And they would then complete the culminating activity and say they get an A on that culminating activity for 20%. Their final grade would then be an A. That grade would be factored into their GPA. Their GPA would improve while still meeting a high school graduation requirement and they would then qualify for, potentially qualify for that scholarship. There is the option that a student already has enough credits, let's say in, in the arts. And they're, they're already fulfilling all their graduation requirements. Maybe that student wants to focus on their math course for graduation and for college. So maybe they're in, in a band, in band and they have a March 12th grade of a B. They may choose to take the credit, no credit and take a no credit option for their, or credit, no credit. They may have limited engagement in the continuous learning. So, you know, they would take a no credit. It wouldn't be factored into their GPA on their transcript. They don't need the credit to graduate and so they would still meet the graduation requirements there.
Jessica and Sarah, if you could, Sarah, if you could scroll back to where it shows the options and have that on the screen. I, I just told Paul that this would probably be a good time for us to pause and have discussion to make sure that we have a good understanding of the different type of, of options available. I think probably most people want to understand it through like a scenario that, that they want to describe. And we could probably come to sort out the vocabulary doing that. And then we'll move on to grades nine through 11.
Yeah, that's a good point, Todd. And, and maybe we'll go in a, you know, in reverse alphabetical order by board member in terms of going through questions on this, which is, you're right. Since my colleagues, some of my colleagues have seen this, some have not, and I haven't until now in detail. So I'll go through the scenario that I'm thinking of. So if I'm a student, a math student who has a C and I elect to go through grade improvement and then I submit 80% of satisfactory of my work throughout the year. I'm assuming in the example, and correct me if I'm wrong, that becomes an A. Then whatever that final assessment or final project is, I get whatever grade determination is. And then after all said and done, it either, my grade can either be, whatever the final grade improvement is, it could either be, well, it's, you know, lower than a C. Then I have the option to go back to the C or take a pass fail, take a credit, no credit. Is that my understanding?
Well, Paul, the idea, the idea is to do no harm. So no student's grade is, is going to go lower than the grade that they had in March 12th.
Okay, yeah. So, so the option would be the C in this example versus a higher grade if somehow I can work it up higher. Or if I don't even like the C, I can go to a, a credit, no credit option. Do I have a choice if I, if I go for grade improvement to then at the end of the year, if I have not improved that C to let's say at least a B, to say, I don't want to see, I'd rather go just credit on my transcript?
So, so there, we're, we're asking students to choose by June 1st which option they would want to do.
Yeah, they'll already know, Paul. They'll already, they'll, they will already know what their grade is. So you're right. So if they go through and they, they go for credit improvement and they don't improve their grade, then they just, they need to inform by June 1st whether or not they are going to go with credit, because that would not be a no credit. That would be a credit. In your scenario of a C, that would be a credit or the grade that they get at the end. So they get to choose.
Yeah, so exactly. So in this scenario, just to, to clarify, so let's say at June 1st, before I do whatever 20% project, it's, it's at least a B. And, and let's say the, but the project, can the project bring that grade down from what I choose on June 1st? Or can it, you know, does it go up?
Not really. Can you hear me, Paul? I'm sorry. So the idea behind the, so if you look at the box that's on the screen right now, so you, you have your B or your B plus for March. If you do 80% of the learning engagements, that becomes an A. So no matter what, you're going to get a, half your grade is going to be an A. Or 40% of your grades can be A. So you're going to take a B and then, which is 40% for March, an A from the April 13th on, which at that point is going to put you at a B plus, A minus. That final activity is basically the bump that gets you the bump up.
Yeah. So I'm saying that final activity, it can't bump you down
It can't bump you down.
From what that grade is on June 1st.
Right.
Okay, got it. All right, I'm fine. And then I guess one other question, and, and this, I know one of my colleagues asked, I'll probably ask, but I might as well ask it now. Is this in line with the executive order from the government, from the governor?
Yes.
That, okay, that, you know, that the work from whatever, you know, whenever she, she had the executive order till now is cannot, is not so-called mandatory. Is, is, is the way we're presenting it now, is that in line with the executive order?
Yes, because the only thing that's actually being given credit is anything past April 13th. And we are giving students the option who did not, who had incomplete work or work that needed to be reviewed prior to March 12th, still have the option up until May 15th to submit that, to improve that, that third quarter grade.
Okay. And then, and then just one more clarifying for me. So as long as they submit this, you know, from April 13th to June 1st, what is considered by each of the teachers themselves satisfactory work, they will get an A from April 13th to Ju-, you know, to June 1st, as long as 80% of what they submit is considered satisfactory at their level by the teacher, at the discretion of the teacher, that'll be considered an A in terms of grade improvement.
Correct. And they have the option, if it, if it's not good enough, if it's not meeting the standard, they have the option to redo it to meet the standard.
Got it. Okay, I'm done. Mark.
And Paul will, what we wanted to do here, Paul, was we wanted to move beyond the minimum expectation of the governor's executive order and even move beyond the suggestions and recommendations by MDE. And the, the way we did that was to make sure that we were having, we were going to have a robust component around student agency and choice. So what you're looking here moves beyond the minimum expectations that have been proposed throughout the state. And, and really our goal here was to have that student agency and choice in terms of that partnership, working together and that collaboration to figure out how a student might want that reflected.
And, and I'm sorry, I have two other questions. That final 20%, it's not a final exam. It's, what, what, can you describe what are two or three examples of what those type of projects will be, that 20%?
So a lot of it depends on the teacher, but it will be course-wise. So it'll be the same for every course. But an example might be a reflective statement that talks about how, what you learned before, how you've learned something new and then giving examples of, of, I mean, I'm trying to think of, so if we were doing English, it might be to find three different poems that reflect your feelings right now during COVID and how that has affected you. For math, like if it's a lower graded math, it might be, you know, can you go back to two concepts that you had a difficult time with and create a video that explains how to do those, to do those problems? So students in the future will be able to do it. Jessica, did you have some other ones?
Um, yeah, I mean, it could be maybe in, um, maybe in say a chemistry course. In the chemistry course, they may do some sort of virtual lab experiment where they would have to then maybe analyze some data and, and show some of the, the skills that they've learned in terms of, you know, looking at data and analyzing data in order to do that. Or, you know, maybe it's, it's writing a,
That's fine.
An argumentative essay or something like that.
I, I get it. And then finally, I think I saw this in the read-up. What I had is so prior to March 11th, if there is missing assignments or, or, or something happened where they would have had an opportunity, they need to submit their plan to the teacher by May 18th. Is that my understanding? In terms of what they need to do to get it caught up, to potentially increase the grade on March 12th based on what's happened in the past. And that's your starting point for the rest. Is that my understanding?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So that's it. Mark?
First of all, I'd like to applaud all you guys, the hard work and creativity that went into this. I think it's evident a lot of thought went into this. And I like the different variations that give students choice to figure out what's best for them and the do no harm concept. I really applaud that. So my hats off to you guys and coming up with this. Two things that I've heard elsewhere that I just want to run by you to get your thoughts on. Let's say a student's eligible, taking six classes eligible for six grades and the student gets, reports three As and three credits. Is there any concern at that point that a university might, well, look at that and say, well, wait a second. Those obviously weren't As because if they were As, they would have chosen them as As. And therefore we're going to treat those credits where somebody's gone to that hybrid election. Any concern in that regard?
I think the concern is that we don't know how colleges are going to look at that because part of what we're also seeing, I have a daughter in college right now, is that that's the same thing that they are doing with her. They're giving her either a pass or, or a grade. So I think that for seniors, I, to be honest, for seniors, it's not that concerned as much because they've already been accepted and they're already going. I think for a junior, you can explain how that, why you picked in terms of how it was working out for you. Again, we, every college is treating this differently. It's the same as in, in a regular situation. We don't really know why schools pick what they do when they do, but that's why we want to make sure the students are able to have that agency themselves to decide what it is that they want.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but it may be phrasing my question and I appreciate that response. The phrasing it a little bit differently, maybe, is there any coaching that should be going on with students to strategic, how they strategically report their own grades and working, whether it's with a counselor or with a teacher? So we don't end up with an unintended consequence for somebody, a student didn't see a problem in it, but the, the rest of us would have seen it.
So we're working closely with colleges to the best of our ability that we can do right now. But, but, but your point is great. This will be a council type of activity. This will be a conference. This won't be a student who just comes up and says, I'm going to do this or I'm going to do that. It's the idea of working with the counselors themselves as they make those decisions. And the decisions for seniors are going to be different than decisions for a ninth through 11th grade student. But all of those will be worked through with the counselors. We haven't quite come up with when you're going to tell us on June 1st which direction you're headed. But that will of course have to be funneled through the counselors themselves. So they will be part of that conversation as well. That's our next step is the, is the application for how are you going to do it with the, with the students. But the counselors right now are already working with the students in terms of helping them make good decisions.
Thank you. The, the other thing that I've heard out there going on at other schools is, and I don't know if there's any projects that are still going on and students are still being graded at a project level, you know, based on their collaborative work with other students. But where I had heard concerns were, let's say there was a project out there and four of the students elected credit, no credit, but one of the students really needed the grade and was doing it for a grade, but the four who elected credit, no credit, kind of just said, we're going to mail it in and left all the work, which was a bit too much for the one student who was left for a grade. Is that anything that we should be concerned about or addressing that any group type of project might be unfair in this situation?
Yes. It's always good to be aware of that. I think that as we move into that conversation, that is something the teacher works with really individually with those students and with those groups. Again, our overarching concern is that we do no harm to the student. So if they're in a situation where there's four people in a group, we've, we've all done group projects like that, where there's four people in the group who are phoning it in and one person who is not. The student who is working really hard will of course be given the benefit of the doubt and given the support they need to get the grade that they need. So this is really a situation where we're hoping that the collaborative environment will allow them to stay connected to their colleagues and to their friends, but we would not want that to be a situation in which it would harm their grade.
It, it would, there be any merit to, and I don't want to create more work for anybody than you guys have already undertaken because you've undertaken an awful lot of work here. I'm very impressed and thankful for it. But in, when there are group projects, teachers assigning, hey, all people are taking credit, no credit. You guys are in groups together and all the students who are for grades being in groups together just to make sure you don't end up in that hybrid situation where somebody really gets, you know, stuck with the lion's share of the work.
Mark, I think that's a really good point and good feedback. And I know the high school administration is going to be working with their staff, maybe it's early tomorrow if I remember correctly. Jessica, if you could nod your head, is that, yeah. And, and I think that, I think what we could do is insert a little bit of posting around what you're suggesting right there. So that teachers are, are aware, can be on the lookout for that and then start talking about how they might design some of those group projects, depending on how, on what choice the students may be considering. Jessica, does that sound like that would be a good thing to put on that agenda as, as a concern for our teachers to, to sort out as they work through that?
Sure, sure. I think so. And one thing that I just want to mention, just to be clear, that credit, no credit is going to be delineated on the transcript as COVID credit, no credit. So that it is different from our pass fail, which is also on our transcripts. Because when colleges look at pass fail, they look at that pass as if the student, you know, was at the D and wasn't going to get the grade they wanted, a C or a D. And that's how colleges look at that pass fail. Where this COVID credit, no credit is, there's going to be an explanation that goes with the transcript to the universities that, that explains what the COVID credit, no credit delineation is indicating.
Again, I'm very thankful for the job that you've done and the way you've approached it from a, a student point of view and the no harm students. And I think this will take a lot of stress off a lot of students where they have the choice on how to present themselves. So thank you.
Before I go to Lisa for a second, just Jessica on that point, is that a Michigan, across Michigan and probably not a national? What's going to go on the transcript, credit, no credit for COVID, that term? Is that, that's going to go on every Michigan transcript across the state? Just, just,
That's, that's, we, that's, we, we have changed our codings that will be on just ours. And then when you apply to colleges, there's a, now I can't remember the name. It's a letter that explains our, our grading system that goes along with it. And that will be on there specifically that it's the COVID credit, no credit versus, as Jessica was saying, you know, there's a student that might not be able to engage as, as much as they could. And so they're going to take the credit instead of taking the grade versus on a regular basis, a student generally will take a credit. So it doesn't hurt their GPA if they're right at that D minus mark.
Oh, so that's a Bloomfield unique term that we're going to use and put on the specific on the transcripts for our students. I got it. Okay. All right, Lisa?
Hi, everyone. I want to thank you as well, everybody in learning services for the excellent plan. I am a pretty tough critic and have heard only positive things about the plan so far from parents and from students and from a span of elementary through high school. Just really well done. Talk about going above and beyond. And I like that we started putting thought into it right away, making sure that even though we were going to take time and do it the right way, we weren't necessarily first out of the gate with a plan, but came out with a plan that I, I haven't seen anything like it. Honestly, I've looked at it. I don't know how many. I don't want to count, but lots. So thank you so much for that. I know that the grading is just a small component of it. But here are my questions concerning the, the grading part that you presented. My understanding of the executive order is that we are sort of freezing in time where students are in March and we cannot require anything of them past March in terms of being able to graduate or advance a grade. Is that correct?
Okay, I actually put in this document, the directives, the actual order. So when it started off, it says K-12 students must continue as fully and as effectively. The education of K-12 students must continue as fully and effectively as possible. So that is what we're doing. That came out of the 2020 number 36. So, so we are continuing fully and effectively as possible through our, Through our continuous learning plan, which is why she instituted that continuous learning plan. What they're saying is um. A little bit later on, the decisions regarding the awarding of credit, the issuance of grades and the use of past field destinations are made by the district level by districts. And then pupils in grade twelve are the only ones that you have one or more of the options. Only those grade twelve students are the ones that we can talk about, just keeping their March grade. That is not an option that's available for grades nine to eleven.
Okay, um. Then, maybe then not a grade, but they cannot be, uh, so if they're not in twelfth grade. And they are not necessarily allowed to keep a grade. If we, uh, we as a district have to advance them a grade. Or graduate them, we cannot require them to do any online work at all.
I, I don't see where it says you cannot require that from them.
I'm agreeing the executive order as if, um, we should, as a district, the directive is to develop a robust plan where they can learn new material. And have the option of district per district getting a grade, but we cannot make that a requirement. Because there are too many districts in the state of Michigan without the option of having any remote learning. And because of the inequity, we cannot make a requirement.
Well, so so Lisa, I guess this is where you and I can have a little bit more of a conversation, but so under, on the screen that I have right now is the actual uh. Executive order, and so it says, when implementing this section, a district may, without limitation, use one or more of the following options. One of the options is award credits and grades for courses taken based on coursework through March eleventh. That is, that's an option that you can do, but that's not what we're doing. Right? So we can provide, so we're moving ahead with our curriculum because we feel very strongly. That we want to make sure we support the students in their post-secondary work, specifically specifically our seniors, and there are still contents and skills that they need to take on to college or whatever they're doing.
Okay, Sarah, I didn't mean to cut you off, and I understood all that. My question is, what are we allowed to require? Not what we may be, but what, what are we allowed to stick, for example, all right, I'll give you the scenario. Uh, I have a kid, let's say, who has all A's, uh, he's in high school, March twelfth, March eleventh, he had all A's, and he's not doing one bit of online work. He doesn't care if they're all passes or if they're all whatever, but he's just not going to do anything.
Well, if he doesn't do any online work in, under our scenario, then he is not going to earn, he is going to earn a no credit for those courses. And depending on where he is with his graduation requirements, his graduation is at risk.
Okay, so my understanding is that that does violate the executive order.
Well, but what I'm saying is like, we would not. Like, if you're going to ask for a specific strict look at that, yes, that's what we would do. But we would do everything we possibly can to not allow that to happen, include showing up at that person's house, knocking on the door and getting them to get to us.
Kids uh, who are chiming in and they don't want to do anything online because they're happy with their grade or they're happy with a pass that says COVID pass. And I want to be honest with the answer. I I have a lot of empathy.
Lisa, in short, in short. If a student was on track to graduate. Prior to the shutdown. That student will graduate.
Okay, and and what about a ninth grader or tenth grader? They're going to have, we have to advance them, even if they do not one bit of online work.
No, that's not, that's actually not true, because you're looking at, so this up here was only about twelfth grade students. So twelfth grade students are the only ones who have the option of the March eleventh grade and an awarding of credit. Not grades nine to eleven do not have that option. They need to continue with the learning.
They can get a pass.
No, they would get it incomplete.
I I think that's not right.
They could, but but the incomplete with the being able to then move ahead and move forward with their learning in another way, and we can support them in that. But we would not fail, we would give them an incomplete.
I I don't think you, we can do that. I don't think that we can hold them back and force them to do other work after March eleventh. I think that violates the order.
Lisa, can you take this offline with them and go through this in detail tomorrow?
Yeah, that, that's my question. It's, it's causing, um, ju- just so we know, and uh. Maybe it's as a district, it's something that we have to prepare in terms of communication. It's causing that issue right there is causing a lot of confusion for parents. There's been Facebook posts for, you know, going on to fifty to seventy-five comments. Asking that particular question. So it's confusing.
I, I think part of what's confusing is the difference between physically closing a school structure versus not continuing education.
Well, that too, Sarah, but I'm telling you that this issue I just outlined is the focus of many inquiries.
All right, so I guess we could take this issue offline, um, that, which is, which is fine.
We should be clear to the public at some point.
Well, we should take it offline, discuss it more, and then, you know, we'll obviously issue a statement on that. All right, Lisa, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, Jennifer?
Hi, um, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
And just to let you know, Jennifer was in an instructional committee meeting for a couple of hours, so she went through this in detail. So that could be the reason why the next three may not have as many questions. Jackie, do you have any questions?
No, I was also in the board instruction committee meeting, um, and uh, I, we went over the scenarios. Um, different scenarios, um, and I understand. And the way this plan is working, and I'm very comfortable with it. Um, the students have every opportunity. To uh. To learn and there is, um, you know, the underlying principles to do no harm. And so. In light of our overarching. Uh, framework of personalized learning, I think there's so many ways that students will be able to move their learning forward. So I'm very comfortable with it.
Okay, Cynthia?
Thank you. Did you ask Howard?
Oh, oh, well, oh, that's right. I forgot Howard. Howard?
I wanted to echo Mark's complimenting of everyone who put this together. This, you know, is a twenty-page document. Obviously pulled together very, very quickly and very, very extensively, so it's a very, very impressive. Uh, my only question is going to be, uh, when you get through nine through eleven and get through the entire presentation. I would love to hear about how you're going to implement this, how it's going to be communicated to the students and the parents. Obviously, we know the the June first date, but that's still five weeks away. So how is this going to be uh? Rolled out to the parents and students so they all understand it, because it's going to take a while for them to absorb it all, not only the facts. But then trying to customize it to their own situation.
Absolutely, Howard. Um, our first plan is, um, with board approval this evening, it would be to go and take it to our high school teachers tomorrow. So they're aware of what it is and then roll it out to our parents next week.
Okay, any other questions, Howard?
I'm all set.
Okay, Cynthia?
Uh, thank you. Um, I too was in um, instruction committee meeting this afternoon, and so I had uh. My questions answered there, and I really do appreciate the deep consideration that our entire. LST team has been working so carefully with our teachers and with Charlie. To be sure that we are taking care of of our students and helping them decide how to move forward on this. And in fact, what I would like to do is, um, I'd like to ask for. Uh, an amendment to our agenda for this evening to add an item of board business. That would be come new item four A, um, to approve. Um, the plan that's being presented this evening so that they can move it forward with our teachers and our families as quickly as possible.
I second that. This is Jackie.
Okay, do we have discussion on just adding it to the agenda in front of our final public comment? Okay, no discussion. Um, I'll do a a roll call vote. Um, Mark?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Okay, it'll be on the agenda right before our public comment. Okay, we'll add it to the agenda. Um, before we go back to, is there anything more? I I guess, do you want to present Sarah, nine through eleven?
Sure.
Um, okay.
So the biggest difference between um, nine through eleven, let me move on down to that part. Is because of that, um, the executive order, um, there, there are only two options for nine to eleven. It's either credit, no credit, or grade improvement. So again, we are moving, it's the same exact scenario as before. So if you are doing sixty percent of, have received credit and sixty percent of the learning engagements post April thirteenth. You can either do the credit, no credit, which would be um. Not included in your grade point average, and we'll talk about some scenarios why you might want to do that, or also a minimum of eighty percent if you're going for the grade improvement, same thing. Minimum of eighty percent credit on learning engagements, um, you know, active in the. Um, teacher office hours and completion of that, um, culminating activity. Um, same formula that will be used before, and again, it's that hundred percent, um, that is really nice. If you do eighty percent of. Um, the learning engagements is actually an A, so that becomes a a nice, good bump up in your. To figure out your grade, and then, um, again, we would work really hard with every single student to make sure that they have earned credit. And, um, we ask teachers to report to the council department by May twenty-second if there's a student of serious concern. Um, let's say a student for various reasons is unable to um. Complete the sixty percent that we're looking for, we would give them an incomplete and then continue to work with them. Um, throughout the summer and throughout the school year to get them to that point where they can earn credit for that class. It is our goal that that no student earns a no credit unless that's something that they opted to do. Um, but we, um, that is our overall goal in terms of how we reach out and the support we're trying to give to our students. So the graphic is, um, pretty much the same as the twelfth grade graphic, except you just have. Um, only the COVID credit, no credit, or the grade improvement. Um, both of those. Credit, no credit does not factor into GPA, grade improvement obviously does. So we wanted to give some scenarios as to why, um, a student would do this. The biggest concern for a ninth through eleventh grade student in terms of taking a class for no credit is that it may affect their graduation requirements. Pretty much all ninth through eleventh graders are in, um, required courses for graduation. So we would be very concerned about a student who is going in a no credit type of direction. And then why students might do these choices, same as up above, is you have a college-bound student who's a junior, has a grade point of three point eight nine. They're at AP Calculus, they want to do the grade improvement because they don't have the option of going back to their March twelfth grade. They actually do the grade improvement, improve their grade, and now that A is factored into their GPA, and they also get to take their AP exam. Um, same student, that college-bound student, three point eight nine, team sports, March grade was a C. They go for credit instead, it's factored into, not factored into their GPA, their GPA remains at a three point eight nine or better, and they meet their graduation requirements. A student, uh, working with a family right now, having a really hard time being able to get online. Uh, because of their their work, um, their current grade in American literature is a C minus, they go for credit. Not factored into the GPA and meet the high school graduation requirements, so they're still on track. And then we finally have that student at the bottom who has enough credits in the arts, wants to really work on their grad, their math course, that's the one they're falling behind in. So they do, they take their B, uh, that's in their Black Hawk Band class, they decided to go for no credit. Of course, I don't know if it's a B, I would probably keep that credit, but they go for no credit because they don't have time to engage in those activities. It's not factored into the uh, GPA, but it will be on the transcript. So. The scenarios are pretty similar, except you just don't have that one, uh, March twelfth where you can return to that grade. Um, again, we were asking them to turn in their work. Uh, any missing work by Monday, May eighteenth, and they would work with their teacher in terms of how to make up that work. Some assignments probably can't be done. Like if it was a class assignment, um, that you had to be with a group, the teacher would come up with another way to have them turn in those missing assignments. And then basically the way it's graded, um, for a credit on a learning engagement is if, um, it reflects. Uh, age or grade appropriate responses, a depth of knowledge and detail or length. Obviously, if you're writing a argumentative essay and you put in five words, that's not going to be enough. Uh, but the teacher can always give them formative feedback if it doesn't meet the credit requirement and allow the students to submit that again for credit. Um, for assignments that are not turned in, the student actively engaged in the online discussion on the learning engagements would also suffice for a credit grade. And then, um, in my star, it will be just marked as either one getting credit on a learning assessment or zero getting no credit. So that teachers or students can, um, check and see where they are in terms of earning their credits that they need. Um, we can go back to questions now if we have questions.
Yeah, um, there's one from my colleagues, but I do have one, you know, as people go through this, and maybe you mentioned it earlier. Um, maybe Jessica mentioned it. Is there going to be a a virtual, um, parent conference night? Or I forgot what we call it now. Is there going to be, is that going to have the opportunity, or they should just be contacting? The teachers if the parents want to just, you know, talk through with the teachers' progress or or any of this plan once it gets rolled out?
Paul, we had not planned to, um, have a virtual conference night. Um, we, um. You know, have the expectation that our, our teachers will reach out to parents, um, especially if there are concerns. Um, or they haven't maybe heard from a student, um. Or or they're not seeing anything from a student, um, and we would encourage parents to reach out to staff as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think, uh, I know Cynthia and then Howard, um, have a question. So Cynthia?
Yes, thank you. Um, two things. One is, uh, I'd appreciate if you can give a little bit more explanation. Uh, about, uh, incomplete. We had a pretty good, um, conversation. Our BIC meeting, and I think it was, I found it helpful to be understanding that better. And then the other thing I wanted to ask that I'm not quite clear about, when you're talking about students who are in nine through eleven. Um, as they are contemplating the choice that they're, they may about grading. Um, they may not be anticipating applying for scholarships or NCAA. Um, teams, um, that they might be thinking about by the time they are, are later on in their school career. Um, will they be getting counseling? Early on, so in the next, you know, couple of weeks or as we roll out this plan for our families. Um, so that as they're thinking ahead, they might make a different choice about their, their improvement. Um, or credit choice, um, uh, if they are contemplating being able to have that, those issues. With their GPA later on in their high school career.
So Cynthia, first to the question about, um, incomplete. So the idea behind, and I pulled it back up on the screen, so if a student is unable to earn the sixty percent credit for their learning engagements. Um, teachers are asked to contact the counselor as soon as possible. So the counselor would reach out to the family, see if there's what we can do to support that student through those learning engagements. Um, if if it's something that that can't be done, or we can't work with that right now, then we would give that student an incomplete. An incomplete only means that they just need to complete the work, and then we can find another way to have that student complete our work. If it's summer school, we can do it with summer school. If it's something that we can do with them in the fall. We can work with them in the fall to have the incomplete. If it's a different assessment, um, we can have the student do that. So the idea behind, um. It is, um, today during our, um, our earlier meeting. Um, my puppy came in and ate the papers and barked and all those little types of thing. If that's happening in our house, I can only imagine what's happening in every other house, let alone the fact that some students are actually now in charge of other siblings. Um, especially at the high school level. So the idea of an incomplete is meant to be just a placeholder until we can put in a grade. The concern for us as educators is making sure that student is able to demonstrate that content and skills, and that if there is a gap, we're able to fill it as we move them forward. Once we've been able to fill that gap, that credit comes back and we, the student's able to move ahead. Um, so, uh, unless a student picks a no credit option. Then we have done everything we possibly can to make sure that student is prepared to go to whatever their post-secondary skills are and also to their class for the next year. So if they're in Algebra I, we will do everything that we can to make sure that they are ready for geometry as they move forward. Um, Jessica, did you want to take on, um, the second part, which was, um. Making the different decisions and how that might impact you in the future? and how that might impact you in the future?
Yeah, sure, we've been working really closely with our counselors. We showed our counselors this, a couple days ago, Tuesday, I think, in the counseling meeting, what we had come up with so far, and they are planning to work individually with all of their students to help them, you know, and counsel them through making a decision for each of their courses based on their EDPs and based on their situation currently.
Cynthia, you had a follow-up question?
I've got an answer, thank you very much.
Okay, got it. Howard?
This is an extensive plan for ninth through 12th. Want to talk about very briefly eighth grade, as children are leaving from eighth grade and matriculating to ninth, have to worry about placement in different courses. Does this, does any of this have implications on eighth grade students?
The eighth grade students that it has implication on are those that are currently enrolled in a high school class that they physically take at the high school. So, we have a lot of students who are in eighth grade who are taking Algebra I for high school credit, but they're taking it back at their middle school setting, so that's a different, that grade doesn't imply here. In terms of, so Howard, you have a great question. So, we wanted to get this done so that we can start to move down to the middle school to see how do we prepare the students for coming into this, because we also have to look at that math placement and the math move up, which includes the seventh graders taking that placement to take the algebra course and also other students who move up. So, that's the next thing on our big agenda of considerations to look at. This does not impact current eighth graders as it is right now. This COVID credit policy, as we see at the moment, will just be for this year, 2019, 2020 graduation year. We, of course, have it in place just in case we have to have some modifications next year based upon what happens in the larger environment.
Yeah, my question was not related to the eighth graders who are taking ninth grade classes now, it was more of the placement issue as they move up in terms of whether, if they're locked in with a March grade, whether that will preclude them from taking a ninth grade classes who start doing scheduling over the next few months?
No, all students will move up. So, yeah, we'll find a way to do an assessment. We have illuminate, which, like I'm thinking of math specifically, we have some really nice assessments we can do through illuminate that are standard space, so we can see where the students are and where we can best place them.
Very good. You'll need to obviously talk to the eighth graders and the eighth grade parents if they are aware of that you're thinking about it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa?
Okay, my question is, if we're going to give students the option of going for grade improvement, how are we doing that without grading the actual assignments they're working on? I understand it's percentage completed, but what if they're completing it and they complete 100%, but it's about C work that they're turning in? It's pretty average, although they're doing it all.
So, the parameters that the teachers are going to put in place are what they feel is grade, age, and course appropriate for that course. So, they can, you know, it's hard for me to say specifically, I'm looking for 80% on this, you know, activity, because we're not grading it, but what we're really doing is providing that formative feedback and basically telling the student, this is what you did well on this assignment, you need to show more depth of knowledge or more detail in this portion, why don't you redo it and turn it back in for more credit? So, because we don't have control of the learning environment that they're currently in, we are going to do everything we can to make sure that the feedback we're giving them is formative and specific to that student and improving their work as they work with the content and the skills moving forward.
I'm just a little unclear about how that translates to a letter grade.
Well, it doesn't, the idea is that if they can show mastery, which is generally considered 80% on the learning engagements that are provided post-April 13th, and with an understanding and grace that they're doing this independently and on their own at home in what could be a very difficult environment, they would, if they can get to that 80%, then they would have an A for that learning engagement opportunities completed determined by the above guidelines. So, they would take their March grade, whatever that is, and then they would take an A because we are giving them grace and compassion in terms of they have managed to do and learn to be independent learners on their own at home with the support of the teachers in a remote environment, and then finish that culminating activity to really kind of synthesize and be able to have closure to their class for that final course grade.
Is this in writing anywhere, Sarah?
Yes, it's in writing, oh, sorry, when we passed it, right here, how to earn credit for learning engagements.
Alright, so the way that I read that was completion of 80% of the work, not an 80% on the work completed.
So, that means they would complete 80% of the engagements that were provided.
Right, so you just said they have to get an 80% or higher on it.
I meant to say that they completed 80% of the learning engagements.
This is a little confusing, and we can work this out later, I don't want to take up too much time with this, but I feel like we really do need to spell this out. The second question I have is, how does a student track or know if they're on track from now until June? I've completed 75%, not 80, or I've completed 60% in May, I mean, sorry, in March. Is there going to be a place that they can look at so that they can sort of monitor that they're on track in terms of completing the right amount of work and can parents check that too? Because if you go to Parent Connect, there's nothing out there.
So, starting, because we haven't had a chance to talk to teachers yet, this will start in my star, they'll get a one, the learning engagement will be put in, and the learning engagements are listed, you know, learning engagement one, learning engagement two, three, four, five. So, if you were looking at the first two weeks, you have five engagements per class, let's say you're in English, you do four of the five, you're at 80%. In my star, you get a one for credit and a zero for no credit.
Alright, so, again, to my original question, if they're doing 100% of it, but like C work or B minus work, we're still going to give them an A from grades?
But the idea is the teacher's going to give them formative feedback along the way to make sure that work is more at that 80%, like a B level, and to move them forward in their thinking.
Alright, so that is, then we're expecting the 80% to be also at least 80%.
Well, when I say mastery, I mean, I think that this is where that grace and compassion goes into both the teacher and to the student in terms of looking at the student, looking at the teacher, looking at the situation, and making sure that that student is moving forward in their content and their knowledge.
Yeah, and I agree 100% with that, I'm happy that we're taking that tack. I just want to be able to make it clear to parents and students what this criteria is, because that's going to be, in my opinion, some of the questions that we're going to end up getting after this, the specifics like that.
Right.
Lisa, I think it's more like, the way I see it is, from a teacher perspective, is it's about giving that formative feedback so that the students, so that the students understand if they're meeting the standards for that course. So, those learning engagements are designed so that when the students are completing that work, they're showing that they're meeting the standards of that course. So, if they complete 80% of those learning engagements, they have, they are showing mastery of those standards. And if there is a standard, say that they, you know, maybe aren't at that mastery level, then the teacher would give that feedback to that student and allow them to show that mastery again, if that makes sense.
It sort of does, I'm just hoping that we're not creating a situation that poses more questions than it answers, but we can, you know, we can deal with it as it goes along. I'm just trying to throw out, as a parent of two high school students, and the questions that their friends have been throwing at them to get to me, it's all about how do I know if this is an A, how do I get the, how do I, so they're asking for very specific information, students are, and I don't think that they're very clear on it. I know that that will develop, I like the flexibility, I like being able to offer grades, I want to, you know, just be really clear 100% that I support, and when it comes time to vote on it, I will wholeheartedly vote in favor of it. I think if we're going to address some of the specifics, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think that, as with everything that we're doing right now, as we flush more things out, we can give more examples and add FAQs as we go along. So, I really appreciate, Lisa, that making us really think through what we're doing. Sometimes you get so embedded in the work you're doing, you can't see the forest for the trees, right?
So, I have a question for, and Lisa, did you have any more questions for, I asked something and then went to Howard?
Well, I mean, I have a couple of follow-up things, they're very specific, so I'm happy to put to one-on-one address those with either Todd and Todd or Sarah at a later date.
Okay, alright, thanks Lisa. And before Howard, so just, and this goes to examples that I've gotten from parents, you know, even the first couple of days, and this may address the question regarding this 40% of, you know, 80% standard. So, a parent would reach out and said, you know, all the assignments, you know, my child did it in, you know, which should have been two hours, did it in 25 minutes. So, in theory, if that wasn't done to satisfaction, that teacher should be sending it back and saying, with feedback and saying, you know, you need to work on this and update this because you've not shown mastery. So, until that actually happens, they will not get, you know, whatever appropriate credit for that assignment. Not saying that that 25 minutes is not, you know, will not get it, but, you know, highly unlikely if it's two hours worth of work and it took someone seven minutes to do, that's probably, you know, so that could answer some of those questions that I'm getting.
Exactly.
Okay, alright, Howard?
Okay, this is real quick, does it make any difference if a course currently is a standard-based grading course or not?
No. I'm sorry, like, in terms of the question you're asking?
We just have, we have some courses that are done SBG. Just was wondering whether this new model that we're rolling out, does it matter whether a course is a traditional grading or a standard-based grading model?
No, because most of what they're doing with those learning engagements are being standard-based learning engagements. I mean, this almost actually is standard-based grading across the board.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, with that, before we close, I don't think there's any more questions for my colleagues and go to prepare you. I do want to say, I mean, you know, I've, you know, again, to reiterate what my colleague said about the learning plan, but even, and I know you guys put this together, the grading policy, and as my colleagues know, I've spoken to a significant amount of different colleagues and board presidents from around Michigan, and this is very, very unique, looking into everything that our community needs. So, again, I applaud you guys for putting this together and trying to meet the needs of all of our students. It's very, very unique right now in the state of Michigan, so I give you guys a lot of credit. With that?
Paul, let me just add, if, because it is so unique, are you guys going to roll it out through at least Oakland schools so that the other 28 districts can look at it and see whether they want to adopt it?
I'm sure through Pat and through some of our other contacts, I'm sure people, they've already started, trust me, asking about it, and I'm sure it'll start being leveraged in other districts, and even districts that have made a decision pass fail, they may start leveraging some of our material. So, again, I give credit to the team here to thinking outside the box and meeting the needs of all of our learners in our community.
Well, we want to thank you for giving us this opportunity, because it's nice to, it's nice to always have that back and forth, so make us make sure that we really know that what we're doing is the right thing for our students, and we're feeling very confident. If you want to put like a trademark on this, you know, go right ahead.
Yep, well, we'll see what we can do.
To Howard's point, real quickly, Paul, about other districts knowing what's going on in Bloomfield Hills, if anybody takes a look at the Detroit News website right now, the lead article on there is about online learning, and the first couple of sentences mention a program that's unique to Bloomfield Hills, and then not only does it go on to discuss Bloomfield Hills and quote our superintendent, but there is a link to our plan right in the Detroit News article.
Alright.
Yep, yeah, like I said, this soon, you know, if we, you know, whatever happens later on, and if this gets rolled out, yes, this will be leveraged by other districts going forward. So, again, I give credit to everyone on this call and everyone that went into putting together this plan. With that, I'm going to go to Prepare You, Margaret?
Hi, everybody, I'm going to do my best to keep this short, as I know, we've been on this for a minute, alright, hold on, I'm going to present. Can we see that, okay? Oh, it's going to load, there we go, can we see that, okay? Yes?
Yes.
Alright, so Amy, I have Amy Scott with me, a Bloomfield Hills teacher, so I'm going to kind of go through this, but she'll answer any questions that you have. As you remember, Prepare You is the health curriculum that we purchased, it's a large unit in health, 15 lessons, and we're going to be looking for the board to approve us purchasing it moving forward so that we can use it next year. So, I'm not going to read everything to you, but, sorry, excuse me, this was really about how we're evolving our health curriculum, how we are taking, taking it into a more of a mental health curriculum, removing the stigma around discussing issues of mental health, really, it's a very restorative approach to how we teach, quite often spent in circles, and students really having the ability to talk and share, it's inquiry-driven, a lot of supports, online supports as well. And we talked about why specifically we need a mental health curriculum, because we know that anxiety and depression are on the rise with our teens, and that we want to be proactive with our students, knowing that this is a huge priority, and it's been a priority in our district, and so wanting to put some solid parts of the curriculum in place so that students have the ability to share and also just learn. So, how we got here, we had spent a significant amount of time with the health teachers and Angie Condon and myself at the end of last school year, evaluating multiple different programs and felt that Prepare You was the strongest option, and you may or may not remember, but we had chosen, rather than piloting more than one, we really felt strongly that all of our students deserve the opportunity to experience the Prepare You curriculum, so we did a little bit of a different pilot because we did it with every single kid. We didn't feel that the other options really compared, so Prepare You was really our only option. And this is really an explanation of Prepare You, but it's got videos in it, it has circles, it's really teacher, it's really student-centered, but with the teacher as a facilitator, so teaches a lot about, you know, has teachers doing a lot of group, almost like, they just call it group, but having the kids in circles, watching a video, then having discussions, and if you have more questions about that, Amy can answer those two as we get through. There are 15 different classes, so we also, not just this, currently this year, it was in all of our health classes and also at Bowers Academy, which was really exciting, and our school social worker over there, Julia, and you're going to hear a lot more about Bowers tonight as well, but Julia, working with Aileen, was, went through the Prepare You curriculum with all the students at Bowers Academy as well. So, these are all the different, or all the different classes that are within the Prepare You, and there's also a live website, and there's a home edition so that parents have the ability to see the lessons as their students are watching them. So, like, if your child had the class, the next day that class is open, and you could preview the video as well and have a discussion with your child at home, and there's also follow-up resources for families, and that's kind of what this is talking about. So, the, as we're making a decision, is this something we want to continue? The biggest thing, that was, the most important thing to us was to make sure we were getting that voice of the students, and so we just asked them a handful of questions. We got a little over 100 students that responded to the survey, so we feel like our data's pretty good, and so that's the big thing we want to, the new thing, I guess, that we want to share with you today. So, we tried to keep the questions really simple for kids to answer, so just the group circles are helpful to me, and you can kind of see the majority, while there are absolutely students that disagree and/or strongly disagree, the majority of our students are in strongly agree and agree. the majority of our students are in strongly agree and agree. Prepare You has helped me learn to cope better with problems. I have learned things about myself that I didn't realize before. I have used the coping strategies that I have learned from the lessons. So this was a huge one that we were talking about because Amy and I had had some discussions when we first started thinking about implementing this and what, you know, even if just one student had new ways of coping, that it was a win for us, right? So to see that this many students, just in our kind of first go-around, are using the coping strategies that they're learning in the lessons outside of health class, I think is huge. My mental health has improved as a result of Prepare You. So again, it looks like a little over half are saying that their mental health has improved from this program. The Prepare You lessons are relevant, which is good. It's mostly like college kids in the videos and they try really hard to make it about what kids need. And they're constantly revising, which is also awesome. Prepare You lessons are relatable. I have personally grown from this mental health unit. These lessons have helped me connect with others, which I think is huge too, especially when you start talking about mental health, students' ability to connect with one another. We know how important that is. Our brains are hardwired to connect. I say that a lot because it's all about, you know, that social emotional learning. And so being able to connect with other people is a big part of our, of being mentally healthy, emotionally healthy. So then we had a couple of open-ended questions, and I just put a few in there that stuck out to me. There were, there were some, you know, students that were disappointed or didn't think, but for the overwhelmingly, students were positive. So I thought this was good. Before this class, I kind of thought all this mental health, mental stuff was fake and people just wanted attention, but now it seems like it's kind of real. So just those realization for kids, just even in a short period of time. And the data that Ryan has through Prepare You shows that, you know, students start to realize that too, even further as they get further out from the lessons, they start to realize that even more as well. So, and this is right after the students took up. And where they learned the most from? I think that's it. So I'm actually gonna stop sharing. And sorry, I kind of flew through, but it's also really late. And so I wanted to give the opportunity for people to ask questions if they had any of Amy, since she's here and she's been hanging out this whole time, so is ready to answer any questions that you have. And we're hopeful that the board would approve us purchasing this unit moving forward.
Just a question, and if anyone, any of my colleagues has a question, just indicate in the chat room, there's nothing right now. But question, just in general, what we're approving? Are we approving to move forward with, I'm just, in terms of the curriculum? I think in the first year, it was just ninth grade. Who has access to this right now in the high school? And what's the plan that we're gonna approve at the next board meeting?
So this is, it's part of our health curriculum. So it's a unit in our health education class. So we would be approving to purchase it to continue to be a unit in our health education class, but we have to.
For all grades or was it just fresh? I forget. Did do all grade? How many students see through this?
Anyone who's in health. So by, after four years, every single student would have been through it because health is a graduation requirement.
Okay, so it's health that everyone in the high school, is there any thought? And I don't know if Amy, the program, does it touch the middle school? Is there, is there, you know, is there thought to have it go down to the middle school? I don't know if Prepare You has anything in the middle school?
They currently only have one product. They are looking at developing more, but if we took it to the middle school, it would be the exact same product in the high school and in the middle school. So that's not really an option right now. But they are looking at developing potentially curriculum that starts at third grade, which would be great. It would be something that we could consider as they continue to develop more.
And then the only other question would be, obviously with now, and I know health is one of the areas that we're covering nine through 12, is the at-home learning aspect of it, I don't know how different it is than, because I know I've witnessed it where the students go in a circle. How does the at-home learning differ than what happened in the actual high school?
So we actually haven't rolled it out yet for the at-home learning, but they have a whole curriculum that we're gonna use, that they have, they have rolled it out. We wanted to make sure that our students were comfortable with us and with this whole new virtual learning before we rolled out the mental health part of it.
Okay, understood. All right, Howard, I know you, well, actually, I think Cynthia has a question, then Howard has two questions.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to know first, when was the survey accepted? Was it before COVID got going? Or I see them nodding there. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna let Amy answer. They gave it. It's okay. She asked when it was given. It was given to the student's first semester. So those were the first semester students that had been through it.
Yeah, sorry.
So would there be a place within the Prepare You curriculum where students will have the opportunity to talk about what they feel about the coronavirus epidemic? And if they have had family members who have been affected by it?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, oh, sorry. I think that we could use one of these Google Hangouts with the class to do our circles. And I think it'll roll through and translate perfectly.
I think some of the units too, there's a lot of, there's a lot of freedom for the teachers to kind of let conversations go where they need to. I can't remember, Amy, is it, was one of the lessons on grief?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a whole, there's a whole lesson on grief, and which would absolutely make sense right now because it's not even just, you know, when we talk about grief, right? Grief is loss of, yes, maybe a person, a loved one, but also just grief of loss of school. That is grief that people are going, that our students are going through, that's grief that we're all going through right now. So I think being able to process that will be really important.
Okay. Howard, you have two questions?
Yes. Number one, what is the cost of this per year?
I'm gonna forget, but I think it was like Tina, I don't want to put Tina on the spot. I think it was like $10,000. It was around there.
Okay, so relatively inexpensive. And second, what type of follow-up is there after they've taken the 15 classes over the next months or even years so that it, you know, they don't lose the impact of what they did over 15 weeks?
So we have a questionnaire that we give the kids right before they go into the lessons, and then they have the same questionnaire right after they come out of the 15 lessons. I can tell you one story that was, it was pretty cool. I had a very shy student who was going through some issues and he threw Prepare You, he was able to kind of come out of his shell. And then I was his, one of his teachers on his NYPD personal project board. And he said, you know, just coming in, knowing that I was in there and that the experience that he and I had 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 and the walls that got broken down from Prepare You helped him tremendously with his NYPD project. So that's just one of the ways that it translated over and how it's moving beyond the classroom walls.
And if I could just add to that, this is Aileen from Bowers. And we utilized Prepare You this year with our students. And the actual content, the curriculum from Prepare You ended within the first semester. But throughout the entire second semester, including during COVID, the students and our social worker Julia have been touching back on those specific lessons that they talked about during Prepare You, using some of those strategies and talking about some of the themes like, for example, grief in some of the online learning sessions that we've been doing with Bowers students.
The only other thing I wanted to add, Howard, was that there is, the families will have access to online, the online version, the home edition, for the tenure of the time that they're in school. So if they take it their freshman year, they have access to that home edition for the following three years. And we've talked about, but we want to, we haven't done anything formally yet. Because I agree with you, I think it's important that we follow up with them in following years beyond just that time in health. So we've talked about how formally to do that with the high school, potentially an interdisciplinary class in 10th grade, especially as we know our students are going through it, will know what they've had access to as freshmen. So how do we then reiterate those concepts 10, 11, 12? We haven't figured it out formally, but we've been talking about it.
Because I'm just thinking, I mean, once you take your biology class, you're done. Once you take your French one class, you're done. But this is kind of a lifelong learning thing and social emotional learning. So once you get the basics here, making sure that all the way through 12th grade, we reinforce it. And especially for students that are at risk and are, when, I know, you know, class number eight on suicide, because I've watched the videos, class number eight, which is the pinnacle of the whole class, is the most important and then it kind of gets easier as you go down nine through 15. But really, you know, so if you get it at ninth grade, you might not really need that through counselors and psychologists until you're in 11th through 12th grade. So really making sure that we embrace all the kids all the way through their ninth through 12th experience.
Yep, we agree. Thank you.
We don't have, thanks, Margaret. Thanks, Amy. We don't have any questions, so I know you'll present at a future board meeting for us to vote on. With that, going back to Margaret, future of Bowers Academy?
Yeah, and I'm really gonna let Aileen take the rails, or the reins, the reins here. And she's got a presentation for you.
Perfect. So. I just wanted to start off by just kind of acknowledging that this, we're in some pretty unprecedented times. And this board update was actually supposed to be the night of the first day that we closed school. So it's kind of a mashup now between an update from then and an update with how we've been kind of coping or dealing with COVID at Bowers. So it's, and then also an update or kind of a review of some of our BIC and FFLA discussions that we've been having. Throughout the past year, we have been celebrating some really awesome success at Bowers in establishing a strong sense of community, in embracing place and in increasing our attendance. And some of the ways that we have been establishing community has been reaching out to other buildings within our district. For example, we've been reaching out to Prep and have tried to establish a partnership with them. You can see that we were sitting at your seats when we visited the Prep to try to develop a partnership with our school store and their school store. We've also developed a partnership with Way in creating a reading buddy program where we bring an animal and do some reading and a craft with the students. The first time that we went, we brought bunnies. And the next time that we went, we brought baby goats. The plan for the rest of the year was baby lambs and some chicks. Those plans obviously got a little bit derailed, but we're hopeful for next year to start these partnerships back up again because these were really awesome opportunities for both our students, our staff, and the Way students, and the Prep students, and the Prep and Way staff members as well. In addition to developing partnerships outside of Bowers, we've also really tried to strengthen the relationships and the community within Bowers. So here, we have been working really closely with the farm staff to make sure that we're utilizing all of our resources. In the top left-hand corner of the screen here, you can see we had a students versus staff volleyball game that was really exciting. In the bottom right-hand corner, you can see we are utilizing the Barton Farmhouse. And the students have presented a business plan to open a school store for Bowers Farm. And so we have purchased a lot of merchandise and have created an entire business plan. On the top right, students have been utilizing the lobby of the farm to lay out the plans for the actual business and have been organizing merchandise. So we're really excited for when school does get back in session to continue with this plan and to continue rolling out these partnerships. One of the really fun opportunities that's very unique to Bowers is the opportunity to engage with animals. So here you can see the students have had the opportunity to engage with animals in a variety of ways. On the bottom left-hand corner, we were supposed to have a turkey lesson one day and it ended up raining. So for science class, instead of going outside, we actually brought the turkey inside. So that was really exciting and fun. When we were leaving school in early March and throughout the winter, we were having baby season on the farm. So you can see in the center, the students engaging in the process of weighing a baby lamb. And throughout the entire season, the students have really capitalized on utilizing the resources that we have available to us on the farm. So it's been really awesome to see. I have been also trying my hand in the farm game, which is pretty exciting. I got to participate in a lot of the live births that were taking place on the farm as well as have students participate in those experiences. And just before the closure began, it was kind of funny because I was in my office and I was thinking to myself, I can't imagine ever having a baby goat next to me while I'm working. And I'm not sure if you can hear the sound, but. So I'm reflecting on this experience and this specific day was right before the closure happened. And at that point, I was saying, I can't believe a baby goat is next to me while I'm working. And now I'm saying, I can't believe my dog is next to me while I'm working. I never thought that we'd see the day that we were working from home, but here we are. And so I think it's really important to consider the idea of what Bowers is, who we are at our core. And so I just wanted to kind of acknowledge some of the responses that students have talked about when I asked them, what is Bowers to you? The students' feedback was, Bowers is community, comfortable, new hope, fun, solid, understanding, a second chance, proud, dynamic, never dull, and empowering. So as I'm thinking about their values and the way that they view Bowers, I really wanted to make sure that we took those ideas or those kind of themes and brought them to their homes as we learn electronically and learn kind of virtually. So right at the beginning of the shutdown, myself and my social worker Julia created care packages for the students. And we brought them some essential items that they might need during the shutdown so that they could have access to some extra materials and also just like share that extra Bowers love that makes us so unique. Learning 2.0 has definitely been a challenge, but we are trying to amp it up. I think it's really important to acknowledge the fact that in this whole process, we are bringing essentially students and other staff members and sometimes even strangers into our homes. It takes a level of vulnerability and transparency. So I've been trying to kind of share that with my staff as well so that when they do it, it feels almost like a new normal. So on the top left, I have a picture here, not my most flattering, I guess, angle, but we were participating in a 30-day kindness challenge. And this was just another way to make connections and be vulnerable and be transparent. And this was an awesome way to kind of bring people together. We participated throughout this shutdown in a virtual spirit week. We've had staff dance parties, we've engaged in book clubs. I'm constantly posting Instagram videos and pictures just to try to continue to embrace these ideas that the students had mentioned before, community, comfortable, new hope, things like this. One of the things that I think is really important, besides the transparency and vulnerability, is to just really emphasize and celebrate and be grateful for the collaboration that happens. At Bowers, I'm kind of on an island as the only administrator. But I think that coupled with a first-year administrator, it can feel a little intimidating or lonely. So I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that LST, especially Margaret and Sarah, have been super, super supportive through this whole process. I've loved teaming up with the high school administrators, the high school team. And we've had some really fun staff meetings and dance parties with the Bowers staff specifically. I think throughout this whole process, it's important to acknowledge a student voice. And I don't normally read from the screen because I don't think it's that effective. But in this case, I'd just like to take a second to share with you a student response from during COVID. My time away from school has been very different. All my life, I've been waking up early, going to school and coming home. I've always hated that fact that school make you wake up early, but now that I don't have it, I miss it. I remember telling myself early into second semester that I have a few months left of high school, I can still be a kid. But now there's no more school. But now there's no more school and I just entered the real world, which is frightening to me, but at the same time I have to keep going. Reminding me of the quote, the future is scary, but you can't just run back to the past because it's familiar. But not, but my time has not been all bad. I've been able to learn new skills and spend my time doing things I'm interested in. Thanks to the amazing staff at Bowers that have been trying to keep us busy by having Google calls with the class or emailing us, asking us, how are you doing? Do you have any questions? And just waiting to know we are safe. I appreciate how they understand this is hard. This is a hard time for a lot of people. And instead of bombarding us with assignments and saying it's due tomorrow, they're giving us time and the help we really need to do our best. So as you can see, the Bowers students, because this is a pretty good kind of picture of how they're feeling in general. The Bowers students are resilient, but I think it's also important to celebrate some of the accomplishments that we have achieved before the closure. So I just wanted to take a second to highlight some student success. Our attendance rate for Bowers for this year has grown substantially. Last school year, the attendance rate was approximately 64%. And this year, the attendance rate has jumped to 84%. And these two pictures on the left hand side are pictures of students who are a part of the attendance club. So we just take one, one day for the first, second, third and fourth quarters to honor the students who have three absences or less. By having a little celebration for them, if it's breakfast or lunch, play a little game, things like that. So that the students realize that they have accomplished awesome attendance, because that's something that we really value. And then another element to really celebrate is that in last school year, there were seven non graduates. And this year, even before the closure and during the closure, all of our seniors at Bowers Academy are on track to graduate. Here, I just wanted to take a second to highlight some transcript growth from last year to this year for two different students. I think that on the left hand side of the screen, we are really highlighting the benefit of strengthening the leadership and the counseling and social work staff. Because as you'll notice, the transcript on the top half of the screen looks a little bit messy. On the bottom half of the screen, the student has really increased his achievement and cleared up any of those incompletes or uncertain grades. On the right hand of the screen, we have a transfer student who has definitely found her place at Bowers Academy because she has improved her grades substantially. So our short term Bowers goals were to have a clear programmatic vision and a foundational leadership structure. We were also interested in growing our enrollment. So we have achieved our first two goals and so now it's time to focus on and increasing our enrollment options. We have currently three ways to be a Bowers student. The first one is if you're a resident of Bloomfield Hills and you could either, you could either go to Bloomfield Hills High School or Bowers Academy, depending on which option is best for you. We have a tuition option and then we're also looking into creating cooperative agreements. Within the past couple of months now, I guess, we have attended BIC and FFLA. And so the next step is, once we return to school, we do plan to continue to explore potential cooperative agreements. But for tonight, we are hoping to adopt the recommendation from BIC and FFLA for a modified tuition option of $10,000 per student for Bowers Academy students.
And just, just, just to clarify, that'll be on our board meeting on April 30th, not tonight.
Gotcha.
Okay. With that, I don't see anyone in the chat room of any comments. I know some of my colleagues, myself, Howard and Mark heard this at our FFLA meeting. So I thank both of you for your work and your presentation. With that, I will move to board business. We have one thing which we added to the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Yes. In support of the post-secondary goals of all students and with compassion and grace towards each family's unique situation during this pandemic. I move that the Board of Education approve the Bloomfield Hill Schools Continuous Learning Plan 2.0 COVID-19 Credit Options for High School Students.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, with that, I'm going to do a roll call. Mark?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Cynthia? Cynthia?
Cynthia.
Yeah.
Yes, that's a yes. Am yes, motion passes. Do we have any public comment out there? I don't think as of.
No, we do not.
Do not? Okay, well, thank you very, thank you everyone. And I'll talk soon, meeting adjourned.